No, um, I think I'm done with those.
I'd like to call a regular meeting of the Oxford Planning and Zoning Commission. To order at six, uh, excuse me, 7:35 PM. Um. Pledge. Let's do another roll call.
Sarah Locke.
Joshua Dykstra.
Peter Perez.
Dan Walton.
Taco Jawa.
Carl Bouchard.
Jason Swan.
Diamond Rosa.
Jessica Penau.
Kevin McSherry.
Okay, I have no comments at this time. Uh, next item is approval minutes. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 6, 2025, public hearing minutes of application Z-25-009.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
I'll make another motion to approve the May 6, 2025, public hearing minutes for application Z-25-004.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 6, 2025, regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, no public hearings. Um, do we have any amendments to the agenda? There are none. Okay, do we have any correspondence? There is none. Audience of citizens, is there anyone that wishes to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on something that is not on the agenda? None? Old business, application Z-25-025, 154 Bowers Hill Road. Owner and applicant, Thomas Sleikis and Megan Sleikis, 154 Bowers Hill Road. Application, special exception to build an accessory structure that exceeds 1,000 square feet. The public hearing was closed on May 20, 2025. So we're in deliberation on this. Anyone have any comments or?
I guess just that we're talking about the building itself here.
The building itself.
Got it. No, I, I, I think that the building looked great, um, and I think it's consistent with the, the property and the house up there.
This is the, uh, 1,100 square foot building?
Yeah, that's the barn, yeah.
On this, uh, you called 1100 square foot?
Yeah. Thousand?
That'd be more than 11,000.
It's here. Kind of figured that.
Ready? Uh, we have a motion. Okay? Okay.
I'll go for it. I'll make a motion to approve application Z-25-025, 154 Bowers Hill Road. Owner and applicant, Thomas Sleikis and Megan Sleikis, 154 Bowers Hill Road, Oxford, Connecticut. Uh, special exception for use. Special exception, replace existing non-conforming barn of 1,300 square feet with a more conforming 1,120 square foot structure. The applicant has submitted the following in support of its application, an application dated April 7, 2025, and a statement of use. The commission makes the following findings. The proposed use shall not be detrimental to the health, safety, welfare, and property values in the neighborhood. The site is suitably landscaped, and the design and setback of buildings and other structures are adequate to protect property and preserve the appearance and character of the neighborhood. Three, the proposed use buildings and other structures are adequate to carry the potential traffic, and that provision is made for entering and leaving the site in such a manner that no traffic hazards will be created, and that adequate off-street parking and loading facilities will be provided. Four, the land in which the used building or other structure is of adequate dimensions to conduct of the use in such a manner that it will not be detrimental to adjoining property in the neighborhood. Five, the accessory use is customary and incidental to the primary residential use of the property accessory buildings totaling 1,000 square foot in area as allowed by regulation. An accessory use in excess of 1,000 square feet requires a special exception. Six, this is a special exception application for an accessory use of 1,120 square feet, which is greater than 1,000 square feet. A special exception can be granted as, A, the accessory building does not exceed 1% of the total area of the lot. 1,120 square feet divided by 72,560 square feet equals .0154% of total area. The proposed access, B, the proposed accessory dwelling contains less than half of the square footage of the principal residence. 1,120 square feet divided by 3,400 square feet. Conditions of approval. One, compliance with all town of Oxford regulations and ordinances in effect as of this date. The applicant will be required to pay all costs of special consultants or studies as deemed necessary by the commission at any time during the period from the initial review through inspection and final acceptance of any improvement. Three, the applicant and its his assigns must comply with all representations made at the Planning and Zoning, Zoning Commission meetings or at public hearings regarding this application. Four, the specific uses on this property shall be limited to those designated within the statement of use submitted by the applicant. Five, the applicant shall comply with all requirements of the fire marshal. Six, the applicant shall obtain all necessary licensing and permits as may be required by the agencies. End of motion.
Do I have a second for discussion? Okay, I have a question. Under 7B, it references a dwelling unit.
The residence.
The proposed accessory dwelling. That's not what it says.
Yes. I don't know, I thi- I don't know, I think it's correct.
No.
The proposed accessory dwelling.
That's not.
Contains less than half of a square foot.
It's a barn. Says the proposed accessory dwelling contains what? That's not what's in front of me. Or structure.
Structure of building.
The pro- yeah, the proposed structure. Structure. And I, I make the motion for that amendment, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Fine, opposed, abstained. Okay. Now with that amendment, do I have a motion to approve?
Well, I've made a motion. There's a second, I think, I think it's ready for a vote.
We need it for the, with the amendment though. That a motion will prove.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the motion with the amendment.
Do I have a second?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We have these, these drawings for this? For the ADU?
I don't see them.
Do we? I know, I don't have them in front of me. Yeah, the interior is what I'm primarily interested in.
Applicant's here.
Yes.
You have any new drawings, what do you have? What was that?
Problem with that, the applicant requests that we table this until the next, uh, meeting.
Good with that.
Okay, so do I have a motion to table this until the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table application. Sorry, I lost the number. until the next regular meeting.
No.
He asked for July.
July? To the first meeting in July.
Second.
Well, later on, we're gonna deal with that. Right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, now we have to, uh, look at Z-25-009. Proposed amendment to the Oxford zoning regulations, Plan Development District PDD. Is there some discussion on this?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if anybody's looked around at this, I kind of mentioned this throughout the public hearing. Um, I, I do think it's a powerful tool for the town to direct how we wanna handle scenarios, housing, whatever it is we want to put in there. I don't know that at face value, we just want to accept what has been given to us. I would really recommend that we look for some advisory, counseling, or, or planner to help us navigate through this, to write it properly. Um, I, looking at other towns and other examples, it seems like there's maybe some gaps that we want to go fill in, maybe some things that we want to write that are more in the line with Oxford and Oxford residents, but that we can also maybe close the gap on some of the housing issues and some of the things that are going on. Um, protect our industrial areas, protect our commercial areas, right? So, I, I just don't know that we want to drop this in the way it is. Doesn't make sense. But I also don't know that we have the, that we want to keep this in our agenda every, every, uh, meeting till the end of time, just kicking this can down the road. We want to action on this, so how do we go and get the extra help to go write this the right way, be involved, but have somebody else that can do a lot of the work for us too?
Paul?
Understand that over the weekend, the legislature passed, I think it was Bill HB 5002, which made some changes to what local zoning jurisdictions can do. Uh, I've done a little research, and I can't find anything that really describes it well, you know? So, that's another reason to hold off, you know? I think we, we need to know what we're dealing with, you know?
I mean, we're up against some time limits here, I would imagine. How do we deal with those? I, I think he said with a consultant planner though, I believe.
Yeah, I, I agree, with, with some additional help. I think we have a starting point, but the additional help and clarity would.
Thought Mike told me today there was a letter.
If I may, um, I, I'm pretty sure that what you're referencing is against an application we don't have in front of us, and what we're more talking about is just a regulation change, but I know roughly what you're talking about. Yep. Right, right, which makes sense to have COG go look at something like that, and, and I think.
If it's even there, I don't know.
Yeah, so.
Uh, I, I just wanted to say, I fully agree with Commissioner Dykstra. It's almost like he was speaking for me, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's, obviously it's a tool and like, utilize it, right, but it's much more personal almost, from town to town, right? I think, you know, Attorney Thomas gave us a lot of ideas, but I think we have to take it with ourselves, honestly. How I look at it. And make it for Oxford.
I have to agree with, uh, without a planner. Get an answer on the time limit. Have to deny. Ready then? If anyone else, no more discussion, or if there is, let's have it.
Yeah, I guess I would just say my position would be to vote it down without prejudice, knowing that we need to go and, and, and action on it. We can't just leave this and say, well, it's done now, let's forget about it, that we really should go back and look at it. Uh, we really should, uh, uh, look at a planner to help guide us through this, especially if we're going to, one, craft it for O- for Oxford, but also try to get ahead of any regulation coming from the state that's gonna dictate the way in which we need to do this. Having somebody there to help us navigate that will be important. But I, I, I do want to advocate that, I'm not saying we shouldn't do something, we absolutely should. We just need to move beyond this moment so that we can actually get to working on something effective.
Anyone else? Anyone else? In that case, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny the proposed amendment to the Oxford zoning regulations, Plan Development District PDD, application Z-25-009, denied without prejudice.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Now, on a second note, now this is outside of the, um, we talked about getting a planner. Um, will you allow me to find us a planner that we can afford?
I would be for that, but I would definitely like to see the recommendations come before the commission so we can all talk about it, obviously, right? I, I probably goes without saying, but I, I, I just want to say, like.
I can find a planner, but I should bring his resume in.
I think that would be fair, right?
Okay, that, that's fine.
I think we've all seen a lot through the years, right?
This is one. Whether, whether it turns out we're gonna use COG, or whether we're gonna hire, you know, a consultant planner.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else have any thoughts on this? Sarah?
Um, are you anticipating that we would work with a planner as an entire commission? Or we would, we'd establish a subcommittee similar to what we've done in other places?
With the entire commission. I, that's, again, at the moment.
Right.
You know? If we, let me say, if we decide to have something, he may only want to work with four people, you know, I, I don't know.
Okay.
My, my thought is let him work with the entire commission.
And my, my question was to get at the fact whether, um, it can be done in a parallel stream with the work that this commission normally does on its monthly, bi-monthly meetings.
I think so. Uh, cause I think we can have him come in, you know? We're gonna look at his resume, may, and have him come in and set up some type of, of, of meeting. Maybe he'll just do his work and, and submit it.
Can we do a 7:00 PM start again and do something like that?
We could do something of that sort, and down to 7:00 PM would be just. I, I feel the same way, and that's, that's my preferred. So that would be one of the things that, you know, you'd have to be willing to work with the entire. All right, do we have? Where are we now?
New business.
New business. Just, this is gonna be heard on the, on the 17th. The Z-25-046, 300 Oxford Road Coring Walk. We're gonna hear that on the 17th, so please familiarize yourself with it.
I will not be here, 1,000%, I'm not gonna be here. I shouldn't have been here today, I'm not gonna be here. You guys have to find somebody to cover, or work with one of the commissioners. I am not the department head, it is not my job or responsibility.
Yes, ma'am. So, it's still, it's, it's scheduled for then. So on, we've probably, you know, in fact, most likely will not be voting on it. You know, you can watch the video, read the, read the documents, and, you know. Go on, okay. Zoning Enforcement reported as CEO.
Um, so, on a Tommy case, I guess somebody drove into the window down there. A lot of soul calls about it. He was out. The insurance company to pay him. Building went out there to make sure it was secure, it is, I really don't have any.
They're holding up the window repair based on the other aspect of it.
Yeah.
All right, well, there's not much we can do about it. Yeah, something.
They're trying to get, they're trying to get him out of there. They're selling their muscles in Texas for selling.
He's living in Boston, he's entitled to celebrate.
Yeah, and from what I understand, that when the police went to the judge, the judge, judge said, that one. All right, do you have something?
Well, it's starting to get really intense on because.
We don't care about you, Rick.
So what, I'm sorry?
The dispensaries are starting to complain about.
You have anything else?
No.
Okay. Um, invoices?
None.
None. Other businesses of the commission, anybody have anything they want to chat about?
All the purpose are aligned now, she's like, everything.
Ah, okay.
Everything.
How it works?
They don't have a computer at home, this is their hardware.
Oh, like the tax successor does, okay. So you spend your time telling people that. Right. All right. All right.
Motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.